I would like to call to order this work session of the Forest Grove City Council. The topic is on boards and commission interview process. A friendly reminder that no public comment will be taken and the council will take no formal action. In attendance, we have Council, Councilor Gussel, Council President Rippey, Councilor Martinez, Councilor Marshall, Mayor Wenzel, Councilor Valenzuela is absent and Councilor Ewing is absent. And at this point, I would like to call up our communication and program manager, Stephanie Fleischer, to give the presentation. Thank you. Hi, Stephanie.
Hi, everyone. Okay, you guys can hear me, right?
Yes, I can.
So, good evening, Council. Before I begin, I'd like to shout out Joyce Phillips. We've been through the recruitment process three times and she assisted in designing and thinking through this proposed process. The purpose of tonight's work session is to discuss a proposed updated process for recruiting and interviewing boards and commissions applicants. These are the items we'll be reviewing to provide you with some background information, neighboring community comparisons, the proposed process, and time for questions and discussion. These are the current rules, the current city council rules, City Charter 38 and City Council Rule 14-1. State the mayor with consent of the council appoints members of boards, commissions, and committees established by ordinance or resolution. And committee, and can do that without, without interviews. Council Rule 14-10, in summary, states that the city has a fall recruitment. Council or council subcommittee may interview candidates. All applicants must be interviewed. And the resolution appointing members is placed on the consent agenda. We'll review the proposed process later, but it keeps our current process and council rules in mind. This is our current process. You all are well aware of what we do. Applications for boards and commissions are accepted all year round. Active recruitment is in the fall when we begin to advertise. We then start coordinating interviews with the candidates and finding time on the council calendar for interviews. We need at least a two-hour work session and candidate interviews run anywhere from two to five minutes. Official appointments occur during a December city council meeting. Our current process can be time-consuming to schedule interviews. There are multiple communications with applicants to get them scheduled. Feedback from applicants is usually that the process is very confusing. Candidates drop out last minute, forget they've applied. They sometimes don't appear for their confirmed interview time. When they do appear, it's for a two-to-five-minute interview. Applicants who apply in January need to wait another 10 months before a possible appointment. The council's busy calendar of action items makes it challenging to schedule interviews. And boards and commissions' interviews can conflict with holiday schedules. Our neighboring communities, Hillsborough and Beaverton, have different processes, but items they have in common are reappointments must apply. Application retention is one year and appointments are subject to consent of council. Where they vary is the interview process. In Hillsborough, the mayor reviews applications and presents recommendations in a staff report. In Beaverton, the staff liaison interviews the candidate and makes a recommendation. In North Plains and Newburgh, they both require appointment, reappointments to apply. Both accept applications all year round and appointments are subject to the consent of council. In North Plains, the boards and commissions members review applications, interview candidates, and make recommendations to the mayor. The mayor appoints the candidate, which is subject to the consent of council. Newburgh doesn't, Newburgh doesn't interview. The mayor reviews apps and appointments. Mayoral appointments are subject to the consent of council. The proposed process keeps our current rules, council time and staff time in mind. We've kept our active recruitment process, which is advertising in the fall. Interviews can be scheduled and appointments can be made all year round, which will keep our boards and commissions filled with active members and we're procuring interested community members quickly. Reappointments must apply. A comprehensive conversational and structured interview is jointly conducted by the staff liaison and council liaison for vacancies or reappointments. Then they jointly make a recommendation to the mayor for appointment. Appointments are subject to the consent of the council. We will hold applications for one year. And the application, the official nomination and candidate application appear in the agenda packet under consent agenda. So we'd like to know your thoughts and if you have any questions, I'm here.
Any questions? Before we open up for discussion, let's do questions. Any questions about the proposed, can you go back one slide for the proposed process? Oh, thanks. You're not going back, Maria. The proposed process.
The only question I have is with regard to the fourth bullet there about the interviews. Are those just scheduled as needed and convenient to everybody?
Correct. I mean, obviously you want to get somebody appointed fast to not have that spot open. But yeah, it would be up to the schedule of the staff liaison and council liaison.
Any other questions about the proposed process? Can you, Ryan, do, can you switch to one more slide over for the discussion items? So in the proposed process, right now, we have a fall appointment. So people are just put in a queue and then the year-round appointment is, we'll still do a recruitment in the fall. Like we'll still recruit and say, hey, we have these board and commissions. Here's what you need to know about it. But as people leave, we can appoint.
Yes.
Yep. Does anyone have any opinions about the fall appointment versus the year-round appointment?
Year-round.
You're, you're, you're good with your, yeah, I agree. HLB has had vacancies for a number of years. And I had two people queued up, ready to join that commission this last year and we lost one of them. Because then something else came and their schedule, and so we still have that vacant. So anyways, I, I think there was, I think the council, a number of years ago, went to the once a year because of staff workload. Because we were interviewing multiple times a year. Staff was doing those interviews multiple times a year. So I think if we have a different process, the year, I guess my question is to city staff would, which way do you think is better for your staff workload between the fall appointment, the year-round appointment?
Well, it's, it's easy to advertise for them, but I think a year-round appointment is very advantageous. Because again, it keeps our boards and commissions filled, which is, you know, a good thing.
Right.
We're not doing all the work.
No, it's okay.
We're not doing all the work at, at one time. That makes sense.
We don't have to use a work session to do, we like no longer have to use a work session or multiple work sessions to achieve that goal. Council President Rippey, you had your hand up.
I was, again, I'm getting into the weeds here a little bit. But going back to that interview process and thinking about staff's involvement in the past and how it consumes some staff time. If the staff liaison to that board and commission is the one that gets assigned to get hold of the council liaison and the applicant, the person applying, and sets up that interview, then it spreads the workload out across staff liaison. Then it is falling on you or Joyce to do it all by yourself. You may have to get a hold of the staff liaison.
And it keeps everybody involved in their board.
It does.
A question about the interview process. Can we then? So it's typically an interview process is that interview questions have to be the same for each interviewee. But if we're having more of an informal conversation, can it be more specific to the board and commission the person's interviewing?
Yeah, so I did think about that. And granted, it would be up to the, you know, council liaison, staff liaison. But I think it would be good to have maybe two or three standard questions, probably ones that were or have been asked in the work sessions previously. And then maybe two or three, like board-specific questions that could be answered or asked.
Jessie.
Maybe just to add to that, I think if you had multiple candidates for one commission and a limited number of vacancies, in other more, in other words, more applicants than vacancies, then you would want to make sure that you have a consistent process for all of those. If you're interviewing one candidate for one vacancy and there's no other candidates, then it could probably be less formal because you don't have anybody else applying.
I guess, I'm gonna make sure my question, I would just like to see questions that are more specific to the board and commission and, you know, and then those would always be the same for people who apply to the board and commissions. But like really figuring out the skill set that goes with Public Arts Commission or with HLB. Whereas now with the two minutes, I never really feel like we have time to, and we're trying to ask the same questions of multiple people applying for multiple boards. Jessie.
And I think that might be one of the advantages to this type of approach is that you're not limited to two to five minutes. You could ask more questions, you could ask repeat, you know, kind of get more in-depth than what the applicant's interests are and so forth, so.
Any other questions or discussion? I'm all in favor of revising. So now we're going to go through and see if we're in favor or not. Like I personally think, I think, you know, when we did the board and commission review process and when we've looked at boards and commissions before, I think the goal of the council is always efficiency in workload. And then also, you know, when I've heard from some volunteers that it's intimidating to come sit below us and like we're, just our structure of being above an applicant and then it's a very intimidating process. The time between, and I think that we always have vacancies and I don't see that in other cities. I don't see other cities' boards and commissions. So like hopefully, I mean, hopes and dreams. But people, if they're leaving in a board and commission, will try to find, say like, hey, I'm no longer doing this. This is a great opportunity. And there's like a little succession in helping find replacements too. So for those reasons, I'm in favor of this idea. We can just go down the line. Does anyone else want to go next? Councilor Gussel.
I'm in favor of the year-round appointment.
Yeah.
Are you not in favor of the interview process?
No, yeah, that's.
Okay, all of it. Okay, cool. Do you have what you need from us? Thank you. Thanks so much. Okay, I'm gonna adjourn this work. All to order, this work session, the Forest Grove City Council, it is 5:56. The topic of tonight's work session is police facility. And a friendly reminder that no public comment will be taken. The council will take no formal action. We have Councilor Gussel, Council President Rippey, Councilor Martinez, Councilor Marshall, and myself, Mayor Wenzel. Absent are Councilor Valenzuela and Councilor Ewing. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our esteemed Police Chief, Henry Reiman.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Council President, fellow counselors, we're here again to talk about the police facility. Next slide, please. Our goal for this evening is to kind of do historical overview. Talk about the past, the present, and the future. Tonight's work session also covers council goal of improving public safety for the community. Next slide, please. So the building was built in 1977. It's 47 years old. Our staffing from 1977 has increased from 17 to 37 full-time staff members. The existing facility is approximately 12,120 feet, square feet, consisting of 70% for daily usage. 22% of that is the indoor firing range, which is in the basement. And 8% of that square footage is dedicated for mechanical systems. The existing police facility has the following functions. Workplace for all staff members, a briefing, report writing, and interview, interview rooms, locker rooms, a kitchenette lunch area, evidence processing and storage, three holding cells, a Sally Port records, and filing storage area. Next slide, please. Give you kind of an assessment of what some of the other police departments look like in approximately same size, the Forest Grove is Sherwood, Westland, Camby, and Walton. And you could see on the slide that most of those buildings are fairly new in comparison to our building. Okay, next slide, I guess you're good there. You want to jump a little quickly. But again, when you look at the square footage, most agencies run the same ratio of officers per citizens that we do. So you could see that in Sherwood. At that time when they built, they had, I think, 23 officers. And Westland was a little bit bigger. But again, the ratio is about the same when we do a police facility. Next slide, please. So in 1918, a assessment was done. During that initial assessment, 34 deficiencies were found. Major ones include insufficient space to effectively efficient and efficiently operate within the confines of our existing facility. Lack of space for processing and storing evidence. Inadequate facilities for interviewing detainees, informants, and victims. Lack of proper facilities for processing and holding juvenile offenders. It does not meet current ADA building code requirements. It does not meet current seismic criteria and requirements. There is a lack of adequate onsite parking. The architecture cannot withstand another level to existing facility. Ability to expand the existing footprint is limited to, to the fire station to the south, the library to the east, roads on the west and the north side of, of the building. Next slide, please. This kind of gives you a overview of how that building was designed. Again, when you look at the drawing, you'll see that retaining walls are kind of not what you would see typical in a rectangle or a square building, which makes it very difficult to make any major changes to that building. Next slide, please. Prior to designing a new facility, alternative analysis was concluded. It revealed that it was more expensive to remodel and meet all the current code requirements than build a new building. Upon a consensus to build new and after extensive location analysis with an emphasis on response times, the city purchased the two corner properties on 19th and Birch in 2018. The city contracted with McKenzie Architecture to design a new facility in 2019. Notable mentions in the design include very detailed space analysis for all functions, extensive value engineering on space and materials. The initial design was at 27,000 square feet, again, with the valued engineering and looking at how to do things better. We got that down to 20,000 square feet. The cost at that time was approximately $20 million or 1,000 per square foot. There are no new functions added in the new design. Secure parking was increased. Areas of increase include evidence, holding facilities, interview areas, separate area for victims, conference room, and offices. Probably one of the other areas which I forgot to put on a slide was the men's and ladies locker room was redesigned to accommodate new hires. And then we also included a 2,800 square foot separately located gun range. Again, that brought down the cost of the initial cost estimate of the building. And it meets all the current requirement codes for ADA and seismic. Next slide, please. And this is, I guess, an initial architect's view of what the building would look on exterior. You have where the car is would be 19th and the other street coming down would be Birch. Next slide. This would be the view of the building from Birch Street, looking east. And this would be the walk-in area for the public, I mean, hallway. And again, giving you an overview of how the building is placed on the property. You could see 19th and Birch. And access for law enforcement would be either from 19th or from Birch. Next slide. Again, this is kind of hard to read, but again, an overview of the layout of the building. Again, you'll see some areas that are outlined in red, but those were some areas that we changed to not in size of building, but just changing office space to already incorporate some of the changes we made organizationally. There you go. Thank you. And again, that area just encompasses how we were doing the locker room. So in this design, we've kind of changed it to include a unisex locker room.
All right, um, excuse me, I'll take it over here. The November 2018, we hired Cam with the long resources to do a voter survey for the police facility bond. Voter survey asked likely voters that they would approve a $20 million bond. Cost around $200 per year for an average assessed value household. Voter survey was based on two focus groups, approximately 12 likely voters each. Wasn't a large survey, but it was, we were unable to do a full survey at that time because getting its sample size for just a random survey was difficult in small towns now. Voter survey found the most compelling messages for yes were the evidence area being undersized would provide separate areas to victims. Right now, the victim and suspects are kind of interviewed in the same hard, cold interview room. Designed to be accessible to all and current facility is old and outdated. Go back one real quick. Most compelling message for no was the cost and also the people think police work out of cars. Patrol does quite a bit, but there's also, patrol's also at the building. Survey found passage of a bond to funding new facility for Forest Grove Police will be difficult. They like that officials, staff, placement unified. Due to percentage of fence sitters organized opposition significantly impact result. We're going to go through some charts here. Next few pages. Initial support you'll see is no, 37%. Yes was 43%. Don't know was 20%. So after the support, after you, after they, they did the focus groups, they, they redid the support. Explain the need for one. No was still 43%. Very confident, yes was 27. Somewhat confident, yes was 15. Leaning yes was eight. Don't know was seven. You'll see, you'll see those three in the, the don't knows, the leaning yes, and the somewhat confident guesses. They're called about 30% of the potential voters there. There's only about a quarter of the percent were very confident. This is low for a bond measure. The other three categories they marked, they call fence sitters. Together, they're like, so they're approximately 30% of the likely voters. Slide. What, what, what the, what the survey company assumes is that you'll probably only get about one-third of the fence sitters to yes. So if you look at, like getting only one-third of the fence sitters to yes, and this was 37% yes for, yes for the police facility bond. 63% against the bond. And at this point in time, though, you gotta remember when this was taken, the attitudes towards police were decidedly somewhat different than they are now due to a lot of things that were going on in the country and police, police were differently thought of than what they are now. So. So we, next slide. So what we decided to do is we put the police facility on pause. Several reasons in 2021, all the, all the measures that were on 2021, such as the metro homeless tax, transportation bond, affordable housing bond, county sheriff's levy, school district capital bond. It also had COVID going on at the time. And we were looking at the city levy as being discussed for the May 2022 ballot. That's the city's operating. Ended up taking it out in a 2022 ballot where it passed. Didn't want the police facility bond, city levy, same time. Cities operate, priority passage, police facility. Presently now, we, McKenzie Architecture updated the cost estimates in 2024 based on construction estimates. Total costs from the new building increased from 20 million to 29.2 million with no additional square footage. Assessment includes the gun range. Now, it's not all building costs from the 20 million to the 29.2 million. 20 million back then, just the hard construction costs, the 29.2 million is sort of all in. Paying the architects, doing the construction documents, designing the rest of the building, all of the soft costs associated with the building, building and equipping it. So that 29.2 was estimated to be the total cost. Cost per average household increased from $200 to $240 per year. Total cost per square foot increased from $1,000 to $1,258. And one of the questions is, what do we do with the current building? And one of the options we looked at, demolishing it. Current cost to demolish the building is approximately $20, but that would be total cost because then you'd have to do something with the site. Well, the site where the police building was instead of just having travel lot sitting every, that's a. Yeah, what, what would be the options to do with that at that point in time? Another option would be to repurpose or sell the building. That could be one option to look at. The utility systems for the, for the police and libraries, they do share, there are common utilities between the police and the library. Would be sold the building. You would have to, would some work, separate those two buildings for completely. Repurpose, we look at other city purposes and we couldn't come up with any other city purposes for what we would do with the building. We also looked at future revenue measures on the ballot. Public safety levy, the county likely mayor November of 2025. WCCLS levy, likely mayor November of 2025. I think that's who thinks in 2025. Metro is talking about repurposing some of the homeless tax to make it, to make it available for affordable housing like they discussed. Likely in November of 2025. Always want to go out in May or November as that ballot avoids the double, the double majority requirement. That 50% turnout, that 50% plus one votes pass. We're also looking at the city levy renewal, probably May of 2027. So discussion, comments about the design, location, additional information the council might like considering potential bond. The council want to consider an approximate $30 million, $30 million 20-year bond, if so, when. May have to look at the dollar amount before we finalize, maybe to increase it a little bit. Anyhow, construction might actually start with the police facility. Costs are going at probably about 6% a year. So the longer we wait, the more expensive the building.
Councilor Gussel.
I think it's a great location. A question I had about the design. Is there a reason why we don't look into using underground space? There's a lot of buildings that we've had go up and, and, you know, digging in and using underground for parking or storage. Doesn't seem to be brought up a lot. Is that not something we can use in, in a case of a new build like this?
The site's probably not that big for undergrounding and plus we have a very high water table.
Got it.
And that's the problem right around here in the downtown area is the, is the height of the water table certain time for the year.
That makes sense. And then the other question was just an estimated, if you did sell the current location, if we've done an estimation on what that might look like.
No, but we could, we could, we could ask the firm that's helping us on, on some stuff, on some other real estate stuff. We could ask them what they think it might be if we sold it.
Thank you.
One thing I wanted to add in, we were talking about the other levies and bonds. I think, I mean, maybe Chief Reiman knows more too, but in the next two to three years, a jail, there's going to be a bond, probably for Washington County Jail. Do you think that, Chief?
Well, at some point, I know that's discussion, but I think at this point, due to staffing issues that they are having on the correction side over at the sheriff's office, that is being postponed. I think they have to figure out their staffing issue on the correction side prior to start looking at another facility.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions or comments or discussion about the design? Council President Rippey.
Well, I, I think what council needs to understand or consider is the, the timing of all of these things is extremely important. The fact that where there's several other bonds or several other measures out there previously. So it gives us a window here. We have a window. If we wait too long to do this, then we're, we're going to be out for another five years at least.
If we wait too long to do this, then we're, we're going to be out for another five years at least. Regard to being able to do this. Uh, was there any discussion with regard to doing another poll or focus group or something to see whether or not the, the numbers have changed? Focus. Yeah.
Jesse, Jesse wants to.
I guess maybe just to add to that, and I, in terms of kind of the doing a, a poll as it's kind of thought of in the traditional sense, which was a phone survey of either likely voters or for sure voters or something like that. It's, it's almost impossible to do that now because there's just no landlines available. Um, and so we were told in our last time that we went to do this, it was called instead of voter survey. And the reason it was called the voter survey is we couldn't do a poll. Um, and so the voter survey actually consisted of, I believe it was two groups of twelve. And then essentially they would kind of ask these questions about, how do you feel about the facility without any messaging? They would get that initial and if you go back to those, those pie charts. So there was kind of the initial messaging about how it hits you if you haven't heard anything about it. And then they would ask a series of questions. And after they asked the series of questions, then they had what was called the fence sitters. And that would become more determinative about what your result would be, but it wasn't, it wasn't a poll. It was actually a kind of two bigger focus groups, if you will. Um, and they tried to be very representative. The only delineation with those kind of focus groups is that they were either likely or for sure voters. And then they tried to become representative after that in terms of demographics, age, et cetera. And so I think we probably, you, you could probably do that if I remember, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, it's not an inexpensive process. Um, no.
Couple of the other comments I have, I, I know this is just general talking right now, but in terms of repurposing the existing building, I'd hate to see us lose that land within the central city owned area. I, I would almost prefer to use that facility with some modifications and rent it out. And use that rent to help offset some of the bond money. That, that to me would be a, a better use of the facility than trying to raise it and put, put in a plaza. Uh, the other thing is that you mentioned there a thirty million twenty year bond. Is there such a thing as a thirty year bond?
You can do it.
It's the interest. Okay. Okay. Thank you. That's all. Thank you for right now.
Anyone else?
With the current design, is it going to be sufficient with the projected growth of the city? Or is it going to be something that's going to be updated in twenty years, thirty years from now?
And all the more reason why to keep the existing building because if you really had to take that space back and have some things in the old building for the police department, then you still have that facility.
Yeah, I probably wouldn't count on any rent from the, if you repurpose that building and rent it out because you're going to be hitting some relatively steep maintenance costs in that police building over the next several years that are probably going to, probably going to use up a lot of the rent money.
When the city goes for bonds like this, do we do we spend some money on like an educational campaign or? So when it says, is there any additional information the council would like considering a potential bond?
Yeah. Well, let's say the council said, we want to look at going out for a bond in May. Then what we would do is we sit down, staff would sit down and we say, okay, if we're going to go out for in May, what do we need to do for an educational, an educational campaign to start reinforcing the, reinforcing the, the voters and that and come up with a, come up with an educational campaign and have Henry, have Henry open that building up for tours all the time. The tour, the building about sells itself, we'd be tour it.
Right.
Can I maybe add to that?
Yeah, go ahead, Jesse.
So when we did the, the focus groups, they also did a lot of testing about the messages, which, which messages resonate. And they even had a kind of a weighted average, if you will, to help the city kind of do an informational effort regarding the building. Um, and we still have kind of all of those, all of those results. Some of the top themes where there's not enough room for evidence. So we, we need some additional space for evidence. Some of the other top themes, we're being able to separate uh, victims from perpetrators. Another one was juvenile from adults. Right now, those are all kind of combined functions, if you will. And this new facility was intended to allow some space to be able to kind of separate those. So you don't have victims and perpetrators in the same space per se. So those are just some of the messaging that was, and that was done through the series of questions that they asked during that voter survey that resulted in some of the results that you're seeing here today.
Chief, how often do people come into the front lobby? To like, ask a question or you're like, what's your person in person count? Like somebody, you know, the library, like we'll say like this are traffic. What's your traffic to lobby?
Easily a dozen a day. We have a lot of people coming in, looking for reports, looking for additional information.
And it's staff nine to five, Monday through Friday?
We run from eight to of four.
Eight to four.
Well, Paul, when was the last bond that we had in the city and how much was that for?
The last general obligation bond we did was in nineteen ninety nine.
Ninety nine?
Yeah, that was for five million dollars, I believe. Passed right before I started.
Any, any other questions or discussion on the first three bullets?
Has it been any thought of having two separate police stations, having like a smaller one on the east side and keeping, considering this one be the west side and having two? And go with a smaller one. You could have both locations.
So from a maintenance perspective, the costs are lower to have, especially for our size city. Uh, since our deployment is not very large compared to Beaverton or Hillsborough. It's more cost effective to have a single facility than to have two facilities.
We did look at it when this, excuse me, in two thousand and eighteen, we did look at an annex before. Anyone else have questions or? Okay, so let's go down to the fourth bullet. Uh, we should just go down the line to make sure everyone has a chance. So does the council want to consider a thirty million twenty year bond? If so, when? Do you also start with Council Marshall's name? So I always start with his name. I'll switch it up. Council Marshall.
I, I think we should. As far as when I don't know. I mean, it needs to be done. The police station is very small. It, it, they've outgrown. So it needs to be done. But finessing that in time wise is the hard, it's going to be the hard one.
Council Martinez.
Yes, I agree. We need to move forward with it and probably sooner other than later, as Paul stated. It just gets to that much more.
Council President Rippey.
Yeah, I think we should go for it. I, I'm looking at the potential levies coming up and they are either May or November of two thousand and twenty five. I think what I remember from our last discussion, the May timeframe was the best for us. So that's, that's next, this next coming May. So I would, I would suggest we go with that. We need to be ahead of some of those others. We're going to please.
Council Gustin.
I agree with the rest of the council.
Okay, so I hear consensus to start the process of education campaign, then we're going to consider a thirty million twenty year bond uh, on, and hopefully on the ballot in the May election. So we still have forty minutes left. Do you need anything else from us?
No, unless you have more questions.
If you have, if you kept the old building, then you would have two buildings, Mike. You'd have north annex and a south.
There you go.
Okay, sorry. Do you guys don't need anything else from us?
No, I think that's, we have enough information to proceed from here.
I'm going to adjourn this work session at six twenty three. We're like a call to order this work session of the Forest Grove City Council. The topic is biennial budgeting. There will be no public comments, no public comment will be taken and the council will take no formal action. In attendance is Council Gustin, Council President Rippey, Council Martinez, Council Marshall, Councilor Ewing is absent and Council Valenzuela is absent. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to our Assistant City Manager and Finance Director, Mr. Paul Downey.
Good evening, Council Mayor. I could have the next slide. This is biennial budgeting. It's responding to Council Objective eleven to explore doing a biennial budget. The city charter says the city manager must prepare to administer the annual city budget. There's no council rule language rules pertaining to the budget. It's all, it's all based on state law and state law permits biennial budgeting. Organizing Congressional Budget Office, biennial budgeting is practice in preparing and adopting budgets for two year periods. We would do a supplemental budget to the biennial budget reviewed annually. For example, for the second year, we would, we do a supplemental budget to make, to take into account changes. And audits of city financial information are still also performed annually as required by state law. The processes prepare and adopt a two year budget. All projections and assumptions are based on two, not one year. Conducting the annual review of the budget and adopt supplemental adjustments to the biennial budget for the second year. That supplemental process is typically much shorter than the annual process. Pros for biennial budgeting focuses more on policy since you're adopting the budget for a longer period of time. We ask the council to take a longer look at their goals and objectives. Requires a longer term approach. Does reduce delay and repetition. And it frees up staff time for other priority policies. Since you're not doing a full budget every two, each year. Cons or potential diminishment of control and oversight depending upon the supplemental budget process. Increased reliance on the supplemental budget. Your estimates for your second year may not be as accurate. Does it require any changes to the charter? No, because there still is an annual budget. It's just passed biannally. In addition, there is also the annual supplemental budget, budget process that gets reviewed and approved by council. We need to change the budget committee terms. No, they could remain the same. However, if council liked to align the terms to the budget cycle. And if a biennial budget is started this year, two members could be extended one year. This will result in three members commencing January twenty, January first, two thousand and twenty five and four members commencing January first, two thousand and twenty seven, similar to the city council. That would put the budget committee rotation in line with the two year, with the two year budget process. So you didn't have a new member starting during the supplemental process. Unless somebody resigns, of course. How would it work? How the supplemental process work? First year or two year budgets passed. Second year or supplementary adjustments are made based on changes that are different than what was estimated in the first budget year. And the differences are proposed to the budget committee and council. For example, we may have new labor contract that is completed, changes to the, the CPI, capital project costs, for example, or some maybe a new capital project was, wasn't expected. Comes up for the second year. Practice, it would result in the same amount of budget committee meetings the first year, probably one less budget committee meeting the second year. Governments utilize biennial budgeting include the state, cities of Hillsborough, North Plains, Westland, Oregon City, Eugene, Ashland, Gladstone. And special districts such as Twalton, Millie Water District. And that's the end of the slideshow.
Any questions for staff?
I have one question. Uh, how, I guess my two part question. How much time accumulative does city staff spend on the budget process each year?
All city staff or just the finance staff?
Let's do it. Let's like say department directors in one group and then finance department.
Department directors, most of them are probably several days because they want to go through their, they want to analyze their expenses and propose expenses for the following year. Finance staff. Uh, we've spent probably a couple of hundred hours each year on the budget process lately because of changing budget, getting the new budget system going up, getting it up and running and doing some other things and analyzing, analyzing changes.
Does the software that this, that you all use, does it allow?
It will allow for it. We will have to, we'll have to get the, we would have to change the software to add the second year. And also to add the, add the second year for the budget and the second year for the workforce. Workforce calculations, workforce is what we use as part of our budgeting software to estimate, to do salary costing. We just have, we'd have to add the second year for both of those.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So I, I understand that one of the pros is, is to have a, a longer term look on things, uh, which is fine. I, I agree with that. But is this going to have any impact on the annual council goal and objectives retreat? So is that then, is there an expectation then that we go to a biennial retreat as well? Cause I'm not sure I'm in favor of that.
Probably what you would do is you would probably still have a retreat each year. The first year, we'd probably ask you to, if you really look at your goals, a lot of the goals you set right now are are over several years right now. Anyway, you just need to maybe look out to see if there's something coming up the second year that you might want to address as you're doing the biennial budget. What you would probably want to do, even in the supplemental year, you would probably want to do a retreat. Another retreat to discuss, discuss the upcoming budget process and your goals and objectives. I think.
No, I think that's a good way to, to answer it. I, I think largely that's also going to depend on the council. The two thousand and forty process may have an impact on that as well. Um, cause through the two thousand and forty process, there's going to be a vision, some values, goals, objectives, et cetera. That's going to have, you know, presumably a longer timeframe as well. And so I think the one, and I know Paul mentioned this, but one thing to consider in a biennial process is there's also a supplemental process. And I kind of call that the, the true up year, if you will. So in between that biennium, uh, you will still have a budget committee meeting. You will still have uh, staff doing estimates. If you have a labor contract, for example, if you have CPI fluctuations. Those will all come to bear through that supplemental process. Where you have to essentially adjust for the second year. But you are estimating in their first year for the second year, and then you're kind of truing up that second year through the supplemental in between, if that makes sense. But as far as the retreat process, I think that would be largely up to the council, but certainly you could have a retreat still every year. You could, you could have a different kind of retreat, maybe every other year, you know, you could have a longer one, one year and maybe a shorter one, one year. It's, it's up to the council.
Right, I understand. But maybe, maybe the, the part of the focus can shift to, um, progress being made as opposed to uh, uh, just coming up with new objectives. And, and from my perspective, I, I think that when you do a biennial or a longer term budget uh, in, in all of the budgets that I've created over the many years, it comes down to the assumptions that are being made.
Mm hmm.
And, uh, so your, your long term budgets are as good as your assumptions are. If you have bad assumptions, you're going to have bad budget. And I understand that's why you have a supplementalist to be able to do a course correction. Uh, but I think from a council's perspective, at least I would be putting more scrutiny on the assumptions being made. Uh, and to ensure that there is little corrections that have to be made in, in the following year. So as there's, that we're, we're both perceived as being both efficient and, and active and effective. So, um, I, I, I myself, I don't know that I think that in a regular budget cycle year where you're coming up with the two year budget, you're where you're coming up with the two-year budget, you're going to spend more time developing that budget and the next year, less time, it kind of works itself out. Maybe in the longer years, it, it makes it a better, but I don't, at this point in time, see a lot of time savings from the staff perspective over the two-year period.
It's going to be more time in the first year, particularly the first time, it, first time we do it.
Yeah, that's understandable because there's a learning curve to that. But, um, what I, what I, how I think, what I like about it in a sense is that there's several things coming together here, and that is, um, the 2040 vision, uh, and what we do with our retreat and doing a biennial budget. All of these are coming together to do more of a strategic long-term, not that two-years-long term, but more of a strategic, uh, view of things. And I think that's important for a city that, especially of Forest Grove, as we're growing, uh, we need to start looking further out in terms of what it is that we need. So, uh, I, from my perspective on council, I think it's, it's a good idea. But I also, and if we can't use, I, I need a really affirmative from staff that this is what you guys want to do because you're doing the work.
Yeah. Like I said, the first year, it'll be more work, and part of the issue, let's say, is also timing on when do we start it? Do we do it starting next year, or do we wait another year and then do the first two-year biennial budget after that? Because the 2040 process probably won't be complete in enough time. Whereas, whereas if we do the 2040, depending on what comes out of the 2040 plan, that would make it a very tight process to do a biennial budget next year, depending, looking at the timeline for completing the 2040 plan.
So yeah, thank you for that. I, I think my response to that would be, given the, the, the work session we just had, I, I would recommend that you, the council, put it off a year, so that you start the biennial in 2026, because you have, you've got this bond measure that's going forward. That's going to consume up staff's time, you getting that done. So that's my recommendation, but it's up to the entire.
Further comments, opinions, questions?
Well, I guess the other thought is, do you want to have it coincide with elections or not? You know, so do you want to have a new coun, a new council members going through a biennial, uh, discussion their very first year, or you want to have another thought process, you guys?
Yeah, I, I mean, there's lots of layers to it, but I almost think with the 2040 plan, like the timeline of the 2040 plan, and to start the long-term budget planning in the same time, like those are two parallel, right? I think that you build it out together. Um, I just, that's how I would. I, I think to me, that's what makes more sense, because I think for me, the long-term goal is that we have this long-term strategic plan, vision, budget. They're all interconnected. And what we're going to, what I believe and what I, you know, in my 10 years of being on council, is that the community wants some different things happening, and we have a small staff, right? So if we want, you know, just one example, if we want the capability or the capacity to be able to have a citizens academy, then, you know, that's going to fall to Joyce and Stephanie. That's going to probably fall to Communication, right, team? And right now, with doing the budget, doing these things, like constantly, they're like, you know, I think they feel like they, I don't want to speak for someone else, but their capacity is capped by some of these systems we have in place. And if we are doing a long-term plan, then, and we're going to have a supplemental, I just think might as well start at the same time we're doing our vision plan.
We will do whatever council wants, so.
I don't, those are my thoughts. Jesse?
I was just going to mention, if you, we did have a slide in here on how it reconciles with the budget committee, in terms of if there would have to be any changes. If you did look at it in terms of the council election process, um, of course, there's going to be an election this November. Um, and so if you started the biennial process this year, it would be coinciding with the, with the every-two-year election cycle. It would also require on the budget committee, right now, the budget committee is, um, I think you have, I think you'd have to move two members that would have to be bumped back one year, and then essentially the budget committee would be commensurate with the city council election cycle. So you would have three members one year and four members, uh, two years from then, and those would be on the same effective terms as what the city council would be. So in other words, this is a long way of saying that if you did want to time it with, with the election cycle, you probably would be looking at this year to start the biennium process, um, as opposed to the following year, because that would be then one year into the, into the, um, next council's term, if that makes sense.
As I think about it, I like it in sequence with the election. So you're, you get new members on council that very next spring, they're, they're into a two-year. I think that's the wiser thing to do, in my opinion.
And if you did want to time it with the election cycle, then you would start the biennium process this year.
Another problem. We'll make it happen.
We've heard from myself and Counsel President Rippey. What do the other three of you think?
We, like, if we, we do it, I think we start, um, next year, that we do get the newly elected.
So now, you mean, for the, for this next fiscal?
We will make it happen.
Sounds good. With all the discussion, it, it makes sense. Yeah. I agree.
All right.
Okay, so there's consensus to go forward with a biennial budget, and we'll start next year, or start this year, this next year. Geez, very clear as mud. We will start in April.
Well, we'll start well before that, trust me. You guys will start in April.
Paul will probably start tomorrow. Maybe. Okay, thank you. Do you need anything else from us?
Nope, I've got enough.
Okay, I'm going to adjourn this work session. We are very efficient tonight.